All right, welcome everyone to the Anna Cortes Planning Commission meeting of December the 10th already, 2025. Ms. Watson, would you please take role?
Commissioner Mills. Commissioner McCombs.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Jetsky.
Here.
And Commissioner Courier.
Here.
And I just got a text from Mr. Mills that he is on his way, so he'll, he's late, but will be on his way. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three on our agenda, or the minutes of 11:12, 2025. Any changes that need to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Stoneman.
Chairman, I move that the minutes be accepted as written.
Waiting for a second.
A second.
Mr. Courier, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes passed. All right, we're on to number four, which is public comment. This is the time for anybody in the audience who would like to speak about something not on the agenda. We're asking that you would just come up to the podium right over there, state your name and your city, and you are welcome to speak. We'll give you three minutes. Anything not on the agenda? Is there anybody online? Okay. All right, then we're going to move on to item five, which are a couple of public hearings. First one is an open record pre-decision public hearing, Port of Anna Cortes, West Basin Redevelopment Framework Development Plan and Shoreline Substantial Development Permit. And we have Ms. Pollard here. It'll be up any second now. There's always this awkward pause, pause here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Public, welcome. My name is Grace Pollard. I'm Senior Planner with the city, and I will be providing the staff presentation for the West Basin Redevelopment Shoreline Substantial Development Permit application and Framework Development Plan proposal. These two land use applications are both a type four city council decision. So tonight is the open record pre-decision hearing, where at the end, Planning Commission will provide a recommendation to city council. The area in question is a large couple acres referred to as Cap San Y West Basin Upland Area, and the Port of Anna Cortes is both the applicant and the landowners. Type four city council decisions for a project when there are multiple applications mandate by state law only one open record public hearing and one closed record public hearing. So we will be addressing both tonight. Both those applications went through the same administrative and processing steps, starting from the pre-application meeting with City Development Review Group, the pre-application neighborhood meeting, public notices, all the way to tonight's open record public hearing. So beginning with the shoreline substantial development permit details, this image here shows the approximate 200-foot shoreline jurisdiction from the ordinary high-water mark around the subject property. The shoreline environment designation is urban. Some basic shoreline development standards include a 25-foot setback for non-water oriented, or sorry, non-water dependent uses. Lot coverage by building is a maximum of 50%. And the elements of the proposal that are considered shoreline uses that are permitted include road and associated facilities, the utilities, parking facilities, and water enjoyment recreation facilities. What was not included in this application and will come at later time are any uses for structures, buildings, whether outright permitted or requiring a conditional use permit will come separately. So the criteria for shoreline substantial development permits is that the proposal must comply with the development regulations of the shoreline master program. The elements of the shoreline master program that were included in the staff report addressed the requirement of no net loss of ecological functions and values. It addressed all the individual shoreline uses that I just listed. It also addressed environmental elements such as vegetation restoration, the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area, shoreline public access. All of those were addressed in the staff report. The area specifically within shoreline jurisdiction is, well, not highlighted, but outlined here. So the bold dashed line, if you can follow my cursor, represents shoreline jurisdiction. So the elements of the first phase of construction for the Framework Development Plan or the West Basin Redevelopment Plan do include all of those listed uses. So there's fill, there's utility work, there's road work, there's the recreation, which is the proposed new street end park, the realignment of Market Street and the intersection of R. Avenue and Ninth Street, some parking. And so the, though there are no buildings proposed under this permit, the building pad areas will be graded for future use. So that is all under the umbrella of this shoreline substantial development permit. Moving on to the details of the framework plan, this is the first one that the city has ever received an application for and processed. So this framework development plan was adopted by code in 2019, and here we are going through the procedures for the very first one. They are not a requirement, it's an option that applicants elect to apply for, and it is to obtain preliminary approval for large phased development proposals. It doesn't go into the nitty-gritty of every single development regulation. It's more to capture the major circulation and infrastructure systems, open space requirements, block frontage designations, and though not under this framework, could also include allocation of categories of land uses. So let's go into that. Here we have just an image of existing conditions on the left and the proposed West Basin Redevelopment Plan on the right. The draft framework development plan, which was Exhibit A in your staff report, addressed elements of the framework agreement that outlined the phasing of the construction, what might happen if a proposed future revision to the framework development plan comes up, what is the timing of the construction improvements, what are the requirements in regards to the major circulation for the shoreline esplanade, or the Tommy Thompson Trail, or connecting public sidewalks. So all of that was outlined in the framework draft. There is-
Ms. Pollard, can I just stop you for a second? Is there a reason that it's called the draft at this point?
It's a draft, so city council being the decision maker will, you know, likely have some input. There's some discussions that we wanted the port to have an opportunity tonight during the open record public hearing to request any changes to that document. So it's kind of a working document until we get through the public hearing process.
Thanks.
Staff did identify the need to, or we recommend that we revise, or if it is more clear to add a second condition for the framework, just to add these elements that were not already included in the draft. So a simple summary of the project, just referencing the SEPA that's on file with ecology. Again, this is a document that's going to run for many years, and there could be different staff, both at the port and at the city, and we want to just make sure that the recorded document links those other applicable elements that have already happened. So nothing changes in these recommendations, nothing changes the meat of the framework plan, just added more clarity. The expiration period of 15 years is also recommended to be included in the final draft of the framework plan, as well as, though we referenced exhibits, they have not been provided, and so we want to make sure that that is a condition in tonight's decision or recommendation to city council, that we don't forget to have those exhibits included before they record the final framework plan. It was quick, but that is the end of my presentation. We can now open the podium to the applicant to provide their presentation and move on to public comment, if that works.
Okay. Thanks for that note. The note is from Mr. Mills, and he will not be able to be here. I saw there was a sighting, but he won't be able to be here. Okay, so before we actually open this as a public hearing, if the port would like to present something, that would be great.
Ms. Martin, do we need to excuse Mr. Mills then, or just let it go till later?
Actually, yes, we do. So, hang on for just a second.
I'd like to move that we excuse Mr. Mills.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Mills. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. He's excused. While, while we're waiting for that to come up, I have a note from Jamie Martin that that person would like to speak tonight. Is it for, is it for this, or is it for the second one? The second one is cottage development. Okay, so I'll wait till we open the public hearing for you, but thanks. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner. My name's John Demoss. I'm the Executive Director of the Port of Anna Cortes, and I appreciate your time and consideration on this project. As Grace alluded to, we've been working closely with the planning staff, so I would like to start off with one of the conditions, which are some of the project goals of the West Basin Redevelopment Plan. So really, when this concept came forward, it's a mixed-use development plan for the upland part of our West Basin, and it's really focused on energizing that area and bringing economy and jobs to that area. It's the last section of undeveloped land around the Cap Santa waterfront. So we have done the North Basin, we've done the Anthony's areas, and now this permit and application is to connect those two waterfront areas and bring some economy. So our framework plan is creating development pads for private sector to come in, and there will be conditions to that, but we want to create the spaces in our framework to bring in private sector to develop economy and business and retails and those things that are vital to the community down on the waterfront. Part of our project's goals is also to enhance this connectivity to the central business district. We are keeping that in the forefront as we look to incorporate Tommy Thompson, Ninth Street realignment, the downtown alliance is working on that. We have the depot expansion the city is doing. We have our RV park and that park up there. This project will also enhance that connectivity and focus on that, and really drive some of the people that are down the waterfront to the commercial business district, and also people in the commercial business district can come down to the waterfront. So one of our goals is to make sure that connectivity is world-class. As anybody that's driven through there, we do have a focus on pedestrian safety and vehicle safety by eliminating the five-way and realigning Ninth Street so that it's more efficient to come out of the Marina, come out of the depot, and work your way onto Ninth Street. Right now, it's a five-way stop. This framework would establish, in essence, two exits on, or two inputs into Ninth Street and get down to Ninth Street. The, the plan does include expanding public access space right next to one of our building sites that will be available and have complete waterfront access view for the public. So it's a very nice public access space that's in between our North Basin and our West Basin, right there on the waterfront facing the docks. So similar to the plaza over by Anthony's and some of our pedestrian going up to Rotary Park, this would enhance that, that public access component of the Cap Santa waterfront. One of the things that's critical and that we see each and every day recently is this project does maintain our heavy haul route, which is critical when we think about the work that the water, working waterfront does and the economy and the jobs that that brings to Anna Cortes. Over the last several months, you've seen large T-Bailey components coming from March Point over to Pier Two to be transported over water, which is kind of the port's wheelhouse. So one of the critical components of that and a large part of our spend on road realignment is to make sure that we maintain that heavy haul route. So the city has been a great partner in ensuring the truck route is able to, allows for the transport of this material off March Point, and this plan has a 50-foot section of the heavy haul route with the radiuses necessary to, to move those materials from the truck route into Pier Two, which is really critical. And the last project goal is this is a framework that's necessary to continue the conversation that the city and port partnership is having on our event facility, which will be located in one of the, located on the building site C of the framework design, which is the interlocal agreements between the two parties that we've been working on over the last year. That event facility is part of this framework. So that, that West Basin redevelopment has used that event facility site within it. So those are some of the project goals that we've been discussing with John and his staff over the last couple of months. We filed the permit in July of 2023, but it's important to note that this, this permit date is not the first time that this has been discussed. The West Basin Upland redevelopment was actually a concept from 1983. It was in the Port of Anna Cortes Comprehensive Plan. It recognized the need to develop this land for mixed-use purposes to connect. It was supposed to have occurred when we put our North Basin docks in. It didn't occur, so time moves on. It was then included in our 2008 comprehensive plan is to redevelop, not develop it anymore, but redevelop the West Basin Upland area in connection with our North Basin and West Basin docks. We again looked at it in 2014 and 2018 as we restudied this West Basin, working with the city, working with our stakeholder groups, the public. In each of these iterations, there was a lot of public outreach. We reached out to the constituents, we reached out to Marina users, the public, the city, and we had very large outreach stakeholder processes in the 2008 comprehensive plan, the 2014 North and West Basin Concept Plan. So we felt, we feel like we've really studied this upland redevelopment very thoroughly with a lot of inputs. And then over the last two years, one of our primary partners has been the city, as we've looked at the event city facility being part of this West Basin Upland development. We feel like this is necessary to finish our energizing the West Basin, but the port is also an economic engine. So when commission considers this investment, it's about the economy and the jobs that it's going to bring. When we look at just these four building sites, it's over 250 jobs. So when we look at economies and needing job creation and those sorts of things, this sort of redevelopment in our West Basin will deliver on those things and be a contributor to, to Anna Cortes as a community. And then, as I said, it's the last section of redevelopment for the Cap Santa waterfront. And as you can see, this was the comp plan of 1983. They got it pretty much what it looks like today, which is what every stakeholder group finds very interesting. As we go through the iterations of the 1983 plan, 24, 2008 comp plan, 2014, 2018, it's a very similar vision. So that is the actual drawings from the 1983 Port of Anna Cortes Comp Plan, and it envisions pretty much what we're submitting to the city and this commission for recommendation on the framework development plan. It has the same components. It has formalized parking. It has a convention center, which we've renamed or rebranded as that event facility. It has open public spaces in there. So it's pretty interesting to see the alignment between the thinkers in 1983 that's carried through multiple comp plans to this very day and doing the same sort of work. So I'm going to now turn it over to Kevin Anderson, our Planning and Projects Manager, to talk about some of the shoreline development. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Good to see you. Kevin Anderson, Port of Anna Cortes. It's been a while since I've talked to you. Happy to have this opportunity again. Hope we're all doing well tonight, staying dry. Oh, shoot. There we go. Oh, yeah, there. So, yeah, so just a couple of things we want to note, since, since we submitted our plans initially, some things have moved forward. Discussion about this events facility, so the shape of the building pad 2A is a little different than it was, what was submitted, which was kind of Utah-shaped, and now it's a very avant-garde, I guess, cluster of rectangles. But as we know, the, the planning for this is kind of, it's iterative, but it also hasn't stopped while we, while things were in review. Another thing I wanted to mention is we're starting with concepts for the waterfront park, which is, I think, roughly 16,000 square feet, is taking that asphalt, removing it from the, from the waterfront there at that, that terrible intersection, and turning it into, inviting public space with a mixture of green and hardscapes to help bring people in and, you know, make it, make it something that people want to visit. Another thing we've been working through recently, especially with the heavy haul routes that's been going on, in 2025, we've had a number of heavy hauls go through there. So we've had an opportunity to really take a look and say, what do we need for these radiuses? What do we need for the space for these things when they overhang and come through here? And those have informed the design, which is still, still in process, but it's one of those things that's very important. So this, instead of a normal parking lot shape, we've got a, we've got a wedge of pie because we have to have large trucks carrying big things go through it, and that's kind of the main conceit of this. It'd be a simpler project design were at a rectangle. But I just want to mention those few things. And one of the things we're considering is we're doing the, we want to do the right-of-way realignment, and most of the site work south of Ninth Street is the first phase, and then stuff north, that's the future Pad E and future Pad D, that'll happen at some point in the future, which is a little, a slight modification from what you might see in your, your packet. But those are things we're formalizing. What's next? Oh, so some of these processes, like, I'm gonna step on one of our, Adam Morrow is remotely, I don't know if he's, you see him? Can you make him a presenter? Cool. And he can advance the slide deck, or do I have to do it for him? Do you have telepathy, Adam? Can you move these slides from Bellingham? No. Okay, so I'll do it for him, if you want to be a presenter.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Hopefully you can hear me, and maybe you can even see me there. Adam Morrow, I'm with Pacific Surveying and Engineering. We are the surveyors and civil engineers that have been working with the Port of Anna Cortes on this project for quite some time and have quite a bit of background here, but there are a few items in your packet that I thought I wanted to, it was important to draw attention to, and these are things that have happened since the original date of our application submission in 2023. And they actually kind of are showing you how we've worked together with the city on various entitlements and agreements since that time to help make this framework plan a reality. So there's a handful of documents that you will see in your thousand-page packet, or whatever it was. I don't envy you having to go through the whole thing, but the important ones that I pulled up were the right-of-way vacation of Ninth Street. So the city council has already approved a vacation of a portion of Ninth Street to help us accommodate the realignment of R. and Ninth. And you'll see some examples of that in other site plans. There's a good one there. That, that happened in July 2024, and there are some conditions attached to that, namely, there's some property transactions that are occurring between the city and the port. There's some right-of-way dedication that has to happen from the port. And so all of that is part and parcel to what we're talking about today. Another document that was approved by the council and signed by the mayor and the port, this one in June of 2025, was an interlocal agreement for, that dealt really with the property transactions component of this. Some of the property that will become the park, which is Track C in the site plan that you're looking at, is actually currently owned by the city. The majority of it is owned by the port, but a little bit is owned by the city. So the port is actually purchasing a piece of land from the city to make that park a reality. We're also getting a realignment of the easement for Market Street as a part of that situation, and in the interlocal agreement, it talks about how all that comes to fruition, how those need to be paid for, when things get dedicated, when things get vacated, and how this all comes to be. So again, that was in June of 2025, and then more recently, in August of 2025, there were two more interlocal agreements that were signed between the port and the city. Those were specific to the event center facility and how that was to be run, and also how it was going to be designed. Those, again, are dependent, all of those things are dependent on what we're talking about tonight and the approval of the framework plan and also the shoreline substantial development permit. And the last one that I wanted to mention that actually hasn't happened yet but is in the process of happening is, I believe it's next Monday, the 15th, the city council will be hearing a petition to extinguish a bunch of old remnant utility easements. will be hearing a petition to extinguish a bunch of old remnant utility easements that exist in this area that are located in places where we envision future buildings to be constructed. And that has to go through the council, a council approval. I think it's a closed record hearing, but I'll be attending that one as well. And so that's next week. And all those things together, balled together, kind of enable us to do what we intend to do here, to make this, this area grow in a smart way. So just quick, and I'll try to make this quick, but we're, again, we're realigning Market Street the way you see it here. It'll be coming in more of a 90-degree angle. We're transferring property ownerships, and that helps us create track C, which is going to become the waterfront park. We're preserving and reserving easement rights for public utilities. So some of the hatch areas you see here are covering utilities that exist that are city utilities that have no easements on them today. We are promoting connections between downtown, the city park, and the Marina, as John talked about. We're promoting safe public interaction and enjoyment of the shoreline. We're enabling construction of new public gathering spaces, encouraging smart use of underutilized public property, and constructing safe routes of travel for cars, bikes, and pedestrians. So just wrapping up, I just wanted you all to understand that the project has, has really come a long way since we initially submitted back in 2023. And it's the framework plan and the shoreline permit approval that will finally enable all the efforts that have been undertaken thus far by the city and the port to bear some fruit. So with that, unless Kevin had more to add on his end, I'm sure that John, Kevin, and I are all happy to answer any questions that, that you might have as you roll through the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrow. Anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Anderson or Mr. Mossman?
I think I have one more slide here. Let me just forward it. So, yeah, this, this is sort of a technical kind of, we have a cartoon drawing, but we're, we're getting a, a better version of it for you that include all these that were recommendations from this planning, planning staff. We wanted to make sure that the boundary accurately reflected our construction phasing, which is one thing that we're going to do here when we submit this again. Pedestrian pad, like, these are sort of bullets that were, are conditions of the framework plan that we want to make sure get memorialized. And, you know, as Adam mentioned, some of the things have changed slightly since we've submitted this. We've, yeah, we're going to include these labels as requested. We're going to change the project boundaries. Pads D and E, that's the things north of Ninth Street will be kind of Phase Three of Construction Two. I can't remember, I can't keep track. There's permitting phases and construction phases. So it's kind of internal reference for us. But, yeah, I, I think we're ready, oop, I guess, yes, we're ready for questions. And John DuMoss is here, my, my boss. But we also have one of the designers, Jeff McClure, here if there's questions. And then I guess Adam's still on, so, yeah.
And we want to recognize that we see port commissioners in the audience, and thank you for coming as well. That's great. I think probably the best thing, and Mr. Coleman, you can cue me for this, but I think I should just open the public hearing at this time and hear from the public, and then we'll take questions from the commissioners.
Okay.
So at this moment, the public hearing is now open, and the first person that has signed up is Jamie Martin to come and speak. So make sure you're speaking right into the microphone and you just say your name and your city.
My name is Jamie Martin, and my city is Anacortes. I live about a block away. I just have one question. I want to commend you guys on the RV park.
Turn this way, so, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I want to commend them on the RV park. I was a skeptic, but it's very well done. I do have a question. I and a lot of other locals and a lot of boaters use the dog park, and I know that with the realignment of Ninth Street, it's going to go through the dog park, and I realize it's the north part and it's down, I thought it was Phase Four. But anyway, I just wanted to ask that if they had, could keep, it doesn't have to be that big, but if they could keep the dog park there until they find a developer for that land, I would really appreciate it. And I know that the people that I see every day and the boaters that I know use it would really appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else would like to comment or ask questions regarding this plan? Anybody online? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to close this open record pre-decision public hearing, and at this time, we'll open it up to commissioners to ask their questions or make their comments. Mr. Stoneman?
Thank you. I guess since we did have the public comment, I'm curious too, is that, is that acceptable or possible with allowing the dog park to continue with the way the plan is written
Thanks for that question. And we did consider, you know, we had six public comments and four of them referred to the, the temporary dog park that, that is there. Building D is, is a vital part of this redevelopment. I don't think the intent was that, for that to be a long-term permanent dog park ever by the port. I know there's going to be some dissatisfaction to the port as we look to develop that and bring an economy and create or have a development there that creates jobs and adds to this, to this revitalization of, of the West Basin. So, no, I, I don't think there's an option to retain that very valuable piece of property on the waterfront as, as a dog park. Our hope is, is that the, the revenue that we're spending on the public access part, which is when we look at the overall investment in this area, the event facility, as you know, is going to be eight million. It's important to note that the port's contribution in the redevelopment around that event facility is about nine million right now in today's dollars, which a large chunk of that is for the public access area that will be water-facing. So our hope is, is that, that, that helps, helps ease the, the loss of the dog park.
There actually, as I looked at the public comment, there were several comments about that dog park. There was also a comment about the height of the buildings along the waterway. Can you speak to that? I know it's too soon for the buildings, but...
This framework of design doesn't, doesn't dictate that, nor have we gone out and looked for proposals or dictated to potential private sector development of these. I'm sure they'll look at the, trying to maximize their investment and then whatever's within code to develop on there. But, you know, we're, we're trying to have a mixed use and four of the, outside of the event facility, these are all going to be partnerships with private development and private partners. So I'm sure they'll be looking at building heights and, and what they can lease out and what, what's going to create the most economy in, in that area within code.
And, and Ms. Pollard, is code 50 feet high at that place, at that area?
I believe it's 35 feet in shoreline jurisdiction. I can double-check the staff report, but...
Okay, other questions? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, John, you mentioned that it looked like there'd be 250 jobs potentially that could come out of this. Like, what did you base that on, or what are your, what was the thought process there as you guys looked at that?
We did an economic impact study in our 2014 and 2018, and they utilized the type of businesses that usually would go in there. So when you look at the, the temporary dog park in a hotel, you're looking at both direct, indirect, and induced jobs. So when you think about restaurants, retail spaces, a hotel, and those primary direct jobs, you're looking at custodial, you're looking at customer service, you're looking at waitstaff, kitchen staff, things like that. All of that is also indirect, all the restaurant suppliers. If they were two stories and you did office space above those, you're going to maximize professional service types jobs. And then the induced jobs that goes in there, the Cisco's of the world that supply restaurants, dry cleaning that are going to go into hotels, all of those service industries that are going to be servicing buildings that are typically going, or developers that are typically going to develop on a waterfront. And we see them in, in a lot of port areas. It happens to be a new line of business for port authorities is redeveloping waterfronts. So I think the economic impact, when we say 250 direct, indirect, and induced jobs, is probably pretty close to true, even though it's, it's four facilities, four buildings.
Just a follow-up question to you, other than the event center and a potential hotel, is that the idea, would it mix-use restaurants, or you just open-minded at this point is what you're looking at for the other buildings?
Correct. The event facility is an anchor tenant, but when we look at putting out requests for proposals for those other buildings, we feel like the partnership between the city and the port to develop an event facility for the community is going to be, raise the value of those other development sites, right? An event facility wants a hotel next to it, a hotel wants an event facility next to it, because they just saved on the square footage of typically a hotel will want a conference center. The city and the port just delivered that for that developer. So it's, it's going to attract a larger pool of developers that'll want to come into the waterfront because the port and city has just delivered an anchor tenant for them to lean on, market, right? You do an event, you have a restaurant right next door, you have that hotel there. So when we talk about bringing in conferences for businesses, corporate events, when you can tie a hotel in a facility, so those are going to be tourism, LTAC dollars that we're bringing into town with this redevelopment. And the natural fits are restaurants and, and retails.
Looks like no other questions.
I can talk about what a good idea says all day long, so hit me.
I do have a question. Let's see. It's in the staff report under project request. It talks about scope of work includes but is not limited to, and then it lists a whole bunch of things. The excavation, import base and sub-base materials. I just wondered about the not limited to and what that meant.
It really is just to not have to dial it down to like the minutia amount. The important part is that the shoreline uses and the shoreline modifications were addressed, and that's those elements that I listed before, you know, parking facilities, road facilities, utilities, that, and the fill, those are what the shoreline regulates. I did not include like what the road, is it accessory facilities or ancillary facilities? I didn't go into the detail of, you know, streetlights and, you know, underground power, you know. I just wanted to give a pretty detailed list, but not demonstrate, or not make anyone believe that that was everything.
Okay. You, you went into quite a detailed list, but, okay.
And I do want to clarify that the base height maximum is 35 feet, but the possible height maximum is 50 feet for buildings.
That's what I thought. So that's a five-story building. Is that true? Possibly?
Usually, yeah.
Yeah. That might be, that might be an issue in our community, but that's in the future, I guess. Okay. Anything else from the commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Drzewski.
At what point in the planning do we, and who's responsible for the traffic control on the, on a street that's already very busy, and you're going to be adding 250 employees and the people utilizing the, the hotel and the restaurants and all? At what point do we start thinking about traffic control there? Because it's, it's already a challenge at certain times of the day or even days of the week.
Well, I know the applicant hired a professional to conduct a traffic and impact study that considered the full build-out and what that might look like. And moving forward, the shoreline permits for the specific uses, you know, will utilize that information, and then if there's any sort of future unforeseen impacts, we'll have to look at that. But usually the, the municipal code relies on the qualified professionals and transportation guidelines. It's not a prescriptive number of parking. It's a, what's, what the code calls a planning director decision, which is based off of those reports. But we would, you know, have to look at that for every permit that comes in separately.
I'm sorry, my question wasn't, wasn't about parking. It was traffic control, as in lights, stop signs, that kind of thing. There's already a tremendous amount of traffic on, on that road, and if you're going northbound, it's virtually impossible to cross and head west certain times of the day now because of a very, very steady stream of traffic. This is going to exasperate that problem. I think about Saturday mornings when the farmer's market's in place and all that traffic around, you know, between 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock on Saturdays and other events. My question is, it seems to me that we ought to be thinking about that because that problem that already exists is not going to get better by adding more cars.
Thanks for clarifying. I did address the wrong point there, but the city engineer has reviewed the level of service for transportation adopted by the comprehensive plan, and based on the information provided by the transportation experts, there's currently no concern that the impact would bring our intersections below adopted level of service. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that.
The city has concurrency standards in our development regulations that address impacts of uses as they're developed. And, you know, we have taken, because this is a larger product, larger project that, you know, we're not exactly able to identify what the future uses are. They have identified likely uses, and we've looked at the traffic impacts of those and determined that they're, they're meeting the concurrency standards and expected development in the area. The, you know, we need to be careful not to say, hey, we don't want traffic, so we're not going to approve development in an area. We have development regulations that make sure that we're looking at it to make sure that we're addressing the impacts of future transportation impacts.
And also, Commissioner, like they had, like, we're currently working on that very issue with the city in partnership for that very issue south of 11th Street. So a partnership that we've worked with, with Public Works over the last two years is to put in lighted crosswalks at, because the reason that Safeway's the busiest Safeway in the region is Cap Santa Marina, and we want people to, to cross that street safely. So you will see in the next year, because of the city and port working together, two lighted crosswalks within a two-block range. So that infrastructure's going in. The city did a great job getting that granting, pedestrian safety granting. So we're, we're very aware of that and watch that and work with the city. So we're already seeing some improvements south of 11th on that very topic.
Thank you.
I guess along the same kind of line, we always hear about capacity for sewer, stormwater, et cetera. And I guess I'm just looking for reassurance that we have the capacity now and in the future.
So the subject property is on fill, and the outfall goes directly into Fidalgo Bay. The, our stormwater manager reviewed the preliminary stormwater reports and drainage reports, and they are flow control exempt. And so they go into Fidalgo Bay, there's not, they're just right there. So there is no capacity issues because it's not going down miles and miles of drainage, you know, under neighborhoods to get to the bay. That's just right there.
And sewer?
Sewer, sewer, so the concurrency review, just like with transportation and stormwater, has to pass the concurrency test. to pass the concurrency test so that the demand on the system does not drop the level of service below the adopted levels by the comp plan. So that will be reviewed once specific uses are proposed. So the hypothetical, you know, four building pads of how many floors and what's the gross floor area and what is the use, we, you know, we have to look at that when those permits come in. But it's a requirement that they, the impact either is mediated with the project proposal. So if there is sewer capacity issues, they have to address them. Most likely the case, I believe that there's not a concern for that at this time.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Where did that voice come from?
Sorry. Hi, I just wanted to go back to the height issue and clarify something in the code. In the commercial marine zone, the base height maximum, as was discussed, is 35 feet. And there is a maximum with height with bonus of 50 feet. And the bonus there, I believe, is referring to integration of affordable housing or small units into a development. And in this particular case, within shoreline jurisdiction, I don't believe that multifamily residential is a permitted use. So they would not be able to take advantage of that bonus incentive within shoreline jurisdiction. But 200 feet back within the commercial marine zone, buildings could theoretically be up to 50.
That's helpful, thanks. All right, commissioners, there is a draft motion. There's no, no page number here, but you can probably find it in your packet if you're interested. And there are, I think it's 19 different recommendations for conditions. And then would, would you be adding one, Ms. Pollard, that, that first one that you just mentioned?
We could either amend condition number one or add another condition at the end of the list.
Okay. There's 16, I thought there was 19. There's 16 commission, uh, conditions that's recommended in this motion. So number one says the applicant must record the final framework development plan with the county auditor's office to be considered enacted. And how would you suggest that we would modify that?
It could say, the applicant must record the final framework development plan, which must include proposal summary, including project goals, reference to CIPA review, expiration period, and attached exhibits, and then continuing with the county auditor's office to be considered enacted. Is one option.
Is there a motion? Yes, Mr. McCombs.
Madam Chair. I recommend the planning commission move to recommend the city, to the city council concerning the subject shoreline substantial development permit, framework development plan, subject of staff's conditions listed below the 16 conditions and also the filing, believe that we said record, file the final framework development plan with the county once approved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to recommend to the city council that we approve this, both the shoreline, no, I don't, I'm not reading it, the shoreline substantial development permit and the framework development plan with the 16 conditions, including number one being modified as you just mentioned. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Watson, would you take a vote, please?
McCombs?
Yay.
Ryan?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stoneman?
Yes.
Jakaritski?
Yes.
Carrier?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Best wishes as you move forward. All right. And now we are on to item 5B. Open record, pre-decision, public hearing, Strandberg Construction Unit Lot Subdivision and Cottage Development. We'll have a presentation from Ms. Pollard, then we'll open the public hearing so you're able to, to give us whatever comments or questions.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Grace Pollard. I'm a senior planner with the City of Anacortes and providing the staff presentation for the Local 17 Unit Lot Subdivision and Cottage Development Proposal. So the Local 17 Cottage Development Proposal includes a few application types. The preliminary unit lot subdivision, critical areas permitted alteration, cottage housing site plan review, and a departure from internal pedestrian circulation design standards. These are all being processed concurrently under the optional consolidated application process by code, with the unit lot subdivision being a type four city council decision, which is the highest review process. All subsequent applications are reviewed under that process. So this hearing addresses the approval of all four requests that create the, the whole. Just like the ports west basin, the process for the pre-application neighborhood meeting conference with the development review group at the city, all of the notices for public comment and hearing were all conducted in a timely manner. And we are currently here at the pre-decision, open record, public hearing. So this aerial image is a kind of zoomed out zoning map. The star in the center of the screen is the approximate location of the project, which is the R2A zone, the residential 2A. And approved residential developments in R2A zone include single family dwellings, duplexes, and cottage housing. This is the immediate vicinity with the site plan of the cottage development imposed to see how it plays into the neighborhood. The property to the east is owned by the city as far as Anacor's Community Forest Lands goes, Parks Department. And the property at the bottom of the screen, which is south, is also Anacor's Community Forest Lands owned by the city. The surrounding developed areas are all single family residential. So the R2A form and intensity standards in table 1942020, combined with the cottage housing standards under 1943040, give us the basis for some of the development parameters. And I just wanted to draw attention to two items that can sometimes be a little confusing. Table 1942020 on the left hand side states that the minimum lot size for R2A zones is 6,000 square feet and the maximum density is six dwelling units per acre. However, we have to review under 1943040, which is on the bottom right corner, that clarifies that cottages are exempt from the minimum lot area and lot width circle standards, provided they comply with density and design standards. And the density requirements for cottage developments is stated in code as due to the smaller relative size of cottage units, each cottage may be counted as one half a dwelling unit for the purpose of calculating density. So we are not looking at 26,000 square foot cottages, cottage lots. We're looking at the parent property with the density of 20 cottages, which they, is far under what the maximum is for the total acreage of the property. Unit lot subdivisions are a little different from your typical subdivision. They are specifically used for attached housing or cottage developments. So whether it's duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, or cottages, it allows for fee simple ownership of those dwelling units opposed to condominiums where you don't own the land underneath your The requirement for easements and CCRs are city requirement that ensures the long-term maintenance responsibilities for common areas, whether that be open space areas or the parking drive aisles, in this case, critical area tracks. So all of that is part of a unit lot subdivision review. Because this is also cottage development housing site plan review, some of the development regulations for cottage housing include some regulations that we don't review at this moment because it's not applicable to the land division application. So cottage size of 1200, no more than 1,200 square feet and building height of no more than 25 feet will be reviewed at time of building permit application when the cottages come in. The other cottage housing standards are reviewed under site plan and the unit lot subdivision, such as the common and private open space requirements, the building orientation and design toward the common open space, requirement for covered porches and entries, parking location and screening if necessary, as well as access and circulation standards. So the property in its existing conditions here shown with an existing single family residence and detached garage. So kind of hidden in the line drawing is the approximate location of the existing house that will remain as well as the garage. And that will be its own single family lot. So this lot is, in a sense, considered 21. There's 20 cottages and then there's one single family that will remain. So that lot will meet the 6,000 square foot minimum lot size where the cottages will then just be reviewed as a parent property, making sure that all the development regulations and density requirements are met. There is a category three wetland on site. It's a largely forested area. There is also a platted, unimproved, but still open, non-vacated alleyway, if you can follow my cursor, up near the 17th Street. The applicant does have a request submitted to have that alley be vacated. That is a legislative decision by city council and so not part of this review, but that is also why you may have noted in the conditions of approval that whatever requirements come out of that vacation approval from city council be performed before we record the unit lot subdivision. So we're kind of reviewing it with the assumption that it gets approved, and if not, they'll just come back and tweak the design. So the cottage housing site plan here has been color coded for us. There's three cottage clusters, green, red, and blue. The common open space is that orange kind of hashed area. The private open space are the green squares immediately adjacent to each individual cottage. Each individual cottage, by the way, are the, the dark primary colors. The smaller rectangles of the same color are the individual single car garages. There are surface parking spaces, there's dumpster location, and pedestrian connectivity. So part of the proposal was a departure from the internal pedestrian circulation design. And code is written in a way where when you have a cottage development that services four or more cottage units, you have to provide a 20-foot wide drive aisle with a five-foot wide sidewalk. And code also provides for a departure to propose an alternative to that. And so what has been proposed here is still having the 20-foot wide drive aisle. That's what is needed for fire and emergency and our solid waste pickup trucks. But they have designed the pedestrian connection to be through the, I guess technically it's the east side, but it's on the top of your screen here. So from the public sidewalk, I've lost my mouse. Here we are in the top left corner is where the proposed onsite pedestrian circulation design begins with a public sidewalk and then dips down into the development and reaches all the way to the farthest cottage. The requirements for approving a departure is that it meets the intent of the standard and the intent of the standard is primarily providing a safe place for pedestrians to access the public sidewalk. And so this being not only wide enough for meeting standards, it's far from any traffic. So it is considered meeting the intent of the code there. The color coding elsewhere is documenting the required covered porches and covered entryways, just demonstrating that all of those cottage housing standards have been incorporated into the design.
So, excuse me, just go back one time. So the light pink, those are the porches?
These, yes, correct.
And then the, the green that's attached to the pink, yeah, what are those?
That is the private open space areas.
Oh.
So each cottage requires private open space and then there is the common open space.
And the common open space is also green?
Is the orange.
Is orange.
Areas.
And the bright green?
Here, on the first turnaround?
Yeah, right there, what are those?
I believe that is actually, the color should be the same as its neighbor, its private open space.
Open space?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you lived in the green, dark green cottages, you would park your car in the bright green, basically away from your home, but down the, just down the street from your home?
Yeah, connected by the pedestrian pathways. So the other application submitted is a critical areas permitted alteration. If we maybe first focus on the far right image, the solid yellow line represents the full width buffer from a type three wetland. The dashed yellow line represents the reduced buffer from a type three wetland. The wetland being the greenish outline kind of snaking through and then pooling there near the bottom of the image. The purple areas to the bottom are, are just what was identified as rock outcroppings. It's not part of the critical area information. The middle illustration here shows how the proposed lot 21 with the existing house is, the dashed area here represents the buffer averaging. So we have the solid yellow line being the full width, the dashed yellow line being the reduction, and then the red hashing being the averaging. So they're proposing to have the dashed area be part of the 6,000 square foot minimum lot area. And they- lot area, and they will make up for that impact in other areas of the site. So for example, the green hashed areas in the bottom-right corner are outside of the buffer area. They would bring that into the buffer area to make sure that the overall functions of the buffer are not negatively impacted by the proposal. And the main reason that this is required for Lot 21 is because currently it's the only residence on the entire large parcel of the project, and its proximity to the wetland is non-conforming, meaning it was legally established at the time, but as regulations have been adopted, it doesn't meet the minimum setbacks. They're protected under the non-conforming laws, and so they can continue without any issue. If however, a fire were to happen and they wanted to rebuild in the same spot, they would be allowed to do that under the non-conforming regulations, provided they submit a complete application within one year. We needed to address what happens in the hypothetical situation that they don't come in with an application within that one year. We needed to create an area outside the buffer that this lot could still build without asking for a critical area variance. So that's the main reason for that combination there. And then the far-left image shows the added buffer area in the top right-hand corner, the bright green area, which is outside the buffer, but is being proposed to be brought into the buffer to make up for the other averaging areas from the cottages near the single-family residence. This image also shows part of the buffer is a 30-foot-wide critical areas tract that will stay under the ownership of the Cottage Development HOA. And then the rest of the buffer is a critical areas tract that the applicant is proposing as part of subdivision requirements for open space, but also part of their alley vacation request to be dedicated to the city for Anacortes Community Forest Lands. So that concludes my presentation. I know we have, do we have some people online? That might be present. Is Jason doing? Sorry.
I don't know that I have a presentation that's not in a revocation exactly what you did, so we can hope I'll have, and maybe I'll take last, or at least after.
Actually, we'll open, we'll give you the opportunity to speak right now, if you would like. Then we'll open the public comment, and then we'll close the public comment and allow the commissioners to ask their questions, and they may be asking you questions at the time as well. So you're welcome to speak now if you would like.
It's up to you, it's not a requirement.
Okay, all right. Then we're going to formally open the public hearing for, let me just read it again. Open record, pre-decision, public hearing, Stramberg Construction, Unit Lot Subdivision and Cottage Development. So if you would like to speak about that, any member of the public can speak about that right now during this open hearing.
You're the only one here. That's not why you're here. Okay. We're all going to stare at you until you.
Just state your name and your city for the record.
Hi, I'm Terry Carroll Gillis, Anacortes. I'm in Skyline there. I had the opportunity to go down every inch of 17th Street this summer, as well as all of Anacortes. And there were some areas I found where they had some of those cottage houses, and I thought they were really nice, and it made it real easy for me to go door-to-door. So I looked at that as, wow, that's a really great idea to help out with our housing situation. So thank you for all the hard work the city's doing.
Thank you. Is there anybody online? Okay. Then I am going to close the public hearing at this time, and now open it up for commissioners, questions or comments. Mr. Dratsky.
Can the developer take Lot 21 and subdivide that at some future point? It's large enough, obviously, to meet the 6,000 or 7,500-foot requirements.
Code would have to change. It's designed right now just to meet the minimum of the current regulations for a single-family residence, again, because it's the 6,000 square feet outside of the buffer. The overall property for Lot 1 is larger, but it is a critical area. So there would not be a way to further subdivide because the rest of the land is wetland buffer.
The whole parcel?
For Lot 21.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. Mr. McCombs.
I have a question. I'm looking at the preliminary, Exhibit A preliminary site plan updated. I'm on page three. I think it's the same diagram that you were showing us prior. And I'm trying to figure out, I see parking, it looks like parking spots, and I'll wait for you to catch up, sorry.
Is this the document?
Yes, I'm looking, I'm on page three, but we can, so I think this was the same one you showed us. And so I'm looking at, in the lower-left-hand corner, you have, there's, I can't tell if the, they're not the dark green, they're not the really bright green, but they're the medium shade of green. Are those garages? Are they?
On either, so this is a turnaround for access to the surface parking space at the end here, and the bright green rectangles do represent single-car garages.
Okay. But then there's no parking directly in front of the cottages if you lived in a cottage?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you lived in the blue ones.
Unless you live in the blue ones. So you'd have to haul your groceries? Okay.
And that's, you know, a cottage development design standard in the case that they dictate where parking can be located. So it's not always an option to have parking because of the amount of surfacing it takes to build the driving lanes to every cottage. So this is a common design proposal when?
Okay, is this, are they asking for exception here, or is this, that's per the code?
Yep.
And then you mentioned, I just want to clarify again, the, I think the, basically the roadway is supposed to be 20 feet per the code?
Correct.
But then this one is 15?
No, sorry, it's still 20, but the five-foot landscape, or excuse me, the five-foot sidewalk?
Yes.
That would be immediately a budding the 20-foot wide?
Jason, okay.
Is instead provided internal to the property. So the drive aisle is still 20 feet wide.
And then the rationale for that is because I can walk around the other side?
Well, the, not placing it alongside the drive aisle, so we would have, the design would have had to have pushed the development to the other side by five feet, and it would increase the, you know, amount of impervious in that area. And so this is just an alternative that is, staff believes meets the intent of requiring a pedestrian connectivity or pedestrian circulation.
Okay. But then the pedestrian route is clearly on the other side through the common space?
Yeah, it's just, it's just getting you to the public sidewalk is the requirement.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just a quick question, I think I know the answer, but on the staff report, preliminary plat approval shows zoning district R2A, but it says comp plan designation 2.
I believe that's accurate. We don't, the comp plan designations, I don't believe break down the As and Bs. So it's whether you're in zoning R2 or R2A, the underlying comp designation is residential 2.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, then I think we also have, let's see, we also have some proposed, oh, this one is the one with 19 different attachments. So, and there should be, I think there is also a motion somewhere. Oh, there it is.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McCombs.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings. In fact, in conclusion of laws presented in the staff report dated December 5, 2025, and recommend approval as a preliminary plat for the local 17 Cottage Development Unit Lot Subdivision to City Council, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Perfect. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I saw a hand before I heard anything, so I'm going to give the second to Mr. Dratsky. All right. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Watson, would you please take the role?
Commissioner McCombs?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dratsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Courier?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Thank you.
Very good job. All right. We are on to item six, Other Business. There's nothing there, so item seven, Planning Department Update.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is John Coleman, Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development, and this is the time when we just give updates about what's going on with some of the projects that the Planning Commission has been a part of. And so the biggest one that the Planning Commission participated in was, of course, the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. As you know, we brought that to the City Council for their review. They identified some small things that they might like to amend in it, and we put that out for public notice, just for public comment on just those handful of changes that they have made. That public comment period goes until tomorrow midday, like 4:30 or 5 o'clock. And then we'll bundle that up and bring it to the City Council for the December 15th meeting, at which time they will, hopefully, fingers crossed, make a recommendation to approve the draft amendments to the development regulations and the comprehensive plan and the zoning map. So that's coming up very soon. I believe today is the 10th, so that is this coming Monday, we may see final action on the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations, thanks to the Planning Commission's two-plus years of work on those items. So that's a big sigh of relief, almost, when we get there, but we're optimistic that we're going to get this through. And I think that's all that we have to talk about. We do have two Planning Commissioners that are ending their terms at the end of this year. So since this is the last Planning Commission meeting that we're going to have in 2025, it seems like maybe we should say a thank you and a goodbye to Commissioner Stoneman, who has been on the commission for about a six-year term.
Finished the term, but I think I started some, I think I finished somebody else's. I don't think I did.
So close to six, we'll say four or five years. Thank you very much for the grueling comprehensive plan. And then we have, of course, Commissioner Courier is leaving because he is going to be sworn in as a City Council member very soon after winning his election to the City Council. So thank you for your two years of service. It's really been really great to have consistency through the Planning Commission, and I think everybody put a lot of hard work into it, and it's really heartfelt thank you.
Thank you.
That said, we are also looking, we do have, we're looking for new Planning Commission members because we couldn't convince some of them to stay. So we do have an advertisement out for new Planning Commission members. So consider this, more advertising if people know anybody. Fill out the Talent Bank application online, and then perhaps the mayor will choose you to be appointed. And I think that's all that staff has for the Planning Commission tonight.
Well, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We're adjourned.